This is not.
I do. He goes to the vet on Wednesday.
It's at a clock.
We're just starting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic, our which is safe, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to take a minute before we jump into the agenda. I just wanted to take a moment to recognize the sacrifice of the two police officers and firefighter from Burnsville. And I think that deserves a moment of silence because we all respect those members of our communities and the sacrifices they make. And with that, thank you to our members of the community who serve us in the same way. Moving on, we have time for open public forum. Is there anybody here who would like to address the council? Megan, come on up.
Megan Schmidt, 214 West Main Street. I'm just calling to get, or coming up to get some clarification or just some information on a sag in the sewer line by our house. Back in October, it was mentioned and they did some vacuuming of that area and some camera work and they found the sag. And then I had some correspondence with Michael back in the fall about them trying to fix it. And there was a possibility of them maybe doing it before winter, but then I was told it could possibly be done during winter too because it's below ground. So they could do that. I haven't really seen anything on the agenda about work orders for it or approving anything like that. And I just don't want it to get lost in the shuffle because there was a whole summer where my kids couldn't play outside because the stench of the sewer was so strong. So we just want to make sure. We didn't really know where it was coming from initially, but that was jettled, I think, at least twice. Once, one big time and I don't know. Yeah, at least that. So I just want to make sure that this isn't an ongoing issue that we're going to have to face. And it wasn't just us that smelled it. It was other people around that neighborhood, so.
Is that on the west side or?
On Nicollet.
Okay.
Yep. So I just want to make sure that that is taken.
We're still waiting for Empire Services to get back to us on when they're able to fix it. There is a sag. I think it's like right where that manhole is. And they haven't keeping an eye on it. Honestly, ever since one of the residents doesn't live on your block anymore, it hasn't been a problem because they have stopped using wipes. But they have been keeping an eye on it. It just, Empire has been pretty busy in order to fix it. That's, they'll, they'll contact us.
Okay.
Yep.
Do you know if I?
I thought they were going to do it this winter, but they never got back to us.
Okay. I just want to make sure that it isn't lost in the project, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Anybody else to speak on open public forum? If not, we will move on to establishing the agenda. Does anybody have anything to add to the agenda? Jenny?
No.
I do not.
Kelly?
No.
Don?
No.
Wanda? Michael?
I do have one item. Mayor Troublehorn, it's going to be 5.10. It's a mutual aid agreement between ourselves and Gaylord for the police department.
So we're putting that on new business on?
Under new business, 510, 5.10.
Got it.
And it is in your packets if you want to look at it at all. Logan and I didn't explain kind of intentions.
All right. So we'll add that. Anything else? Someone would like to move to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Jenny, second by Kelly. Any discussion, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carried. The consent agenda. Is there ever a chance to look at that? Any other questions? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
So I'll second.
Kelly, second by Dawn. Any discussion? Any discussion, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Consent agenda carried. All right. New business, 5.1, resolution regarding election judges and head judge appointments.
Well, it's that time of year again. We have the presidential primary. The fun thing is, is they, the only judges that can be at our precinct are judges that have served in the past during the presidential primary. So we're going to be a little short, but we'll still be okay. I'm not too worried about it. I just want to thank those that do give up their time for the election. It's, it's really important and obviously we couldn't do it without volunteers.
How many people do they usually have serving?
We normally have three additional serving. But honestly, we're not expecting a giant turnout for the presidential primary. So it should be pretty smooth. We actually have more now than we did during the school board election, so we should be okay.
Yes, I would echo that. Thank you to everybody who does volunteer. As a volunteer, it's fun. I've done it for years and years, so it's, it's a good thing to do. Someone would like to move to approve that resolution?
I'll make a motion to approve that resolution.
Second by Jenny, second by Wanda. Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carried. Candidates for the open city council position.
Yes, so we had three candidates that applied for the position. I know that one candidate, Ed Stoll, is not able to make it due to a work conflict, but he did make a statement that we can read. So basically what's going to happen is we are giving them two minutes to make a statement to council. Council will consider those statements and then council will nominate and pass a resolution selecting one of the candidates to fill the vacant city council position. At that time, we'll do the oath of office. Or if they're not here, obviously we'll do it when next available situation that they're ready. So with that, Mayor Troublehorn, do you want me to read? Do you want the candidate that's here to go first, since he's here?
Yeah, why don't we, yes, let's do that. Do you want to come along, Brent?
Yeah. That'd be great, Brent. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Do as I'm instructed sometimes. Brent Reuger. I didn't prepare anything because it's pretty much going to be just a reiteration of what I put in my application. I've sat on that side of the table before, done at least one, if not one and a half or so terms as a councilperson. I think I demonstrated my willingness to serve by running in the previous election, finishing fourth out of six. So just, just missed getting, getting elected. I tend to approach things pretty straightforward, pretty head on. I tend to be fairly conservative in nature and I always, my first thought process whenever an issue comes up is what's, what's the best course of action for the most people in the city? What's going to benefit the majority? And then from there, it's how can we do this and not kill people financially in the process? So those are kind of the two things that I hang my hat on, so to speak. Going back a little bit in time when I was on the first time, and probably nobody knows this because I really haven't shared it with a whole lot, but Pete did pull me aside one time and say, I really appreciate the efforts you've made while you were in your time up here. And he and I didn't always see eye to eye on everything, but about six months ago, we ran into each other downtown and he made it a point to ask me my opinion. So, and I didn't approach him, he approached me, and so I think there was a mutual respect there. So I'd be honored to take over for the remainder of his term, just to kind of try to help things along for the city.
And then we will, does council have any questions?
Thank you.
All right. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
And then this is the statement from Mr. Ed Stoll. The questions were, why are you interested in being appointed to the city council? Have you been associated with the ambulance for over 20 years and may attending countless council meetings? I feel this is another way I can give back to my community. My family moved to this community in 1995 and my wife and I have raised seven children to adulthood and we still have one at home who needs, who needs to know this community will be strong for him as we continue to grow. I believe our council has done great work and would like to help continue that work. What strengths and abilities would you bring to the council? I have been in the business world much of my life managing people and projects. I understand the value of a group effort. I also understand that not all people have the same opinion and I'm happy to listen to the other side. I've been active in this community and my wife is a small business owner and I help her out with the cafe. I value the community and look forward to serving it as a member of the council should I be selected. Are there additional committees or meetings? Yes, I am fortunate my experience in committees keeps me from attending this meeting. If selected, I would make sure that, that I would make council meetings a priority. And that was the statement.
Okay.
And I don't, the other candidate was Jackie Krueger and I don't see her in the audience, so.
I don't. I guess fairness, do you want to read her comments from her application?
I sure can.
On balance?
All right. The question is, why are you interested in being appointed to the city council at our commission? I have lived in the community since 1977, became a homeowner in, homeowner in 1995. I'm open minded, a good listener. I want what's best for the city of Winthrop with the necessary improvements that are needed. What are your strengths and abilities that you bring to the board of commission? In my last job, I worked as a bar manager. Previous to GFW School, I was the coordinator slash manager of Sibley County Foods, worked with budgets at both jobs along with working with the public. I've written many grants for improvements at SC Food Share. And then are you aware of the importance of attending regular meetings? I am aware of the required attendance needed.
Okay. So council, you have heard from the applicants for the vacant position. What are your wishes? Somebody like to make a motion?
Just to make a motion to.
If you want, if somebody's wanting to make a motion.
Do we want? I make a motion for Jackie Krueger. Motion for Jackie Krueger.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. So the motion is second for Jackie Krueger. Is there any discussion? Do you have any? Any discussion? Then I will call a question. All those in favor of appointing Jackie Krueger to the position on council, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Aye. Did you vote?
I didn't vote because I'm not sure. I don't know her well at all.
Well, I would, I would say maybe we have to go by the information in the application. Based on that, I would say no.
All right. We have time. So we have time.
So now we have, we can do one of two things. We can table the item, which would be brought up at the next council meeting, or you can make a separate motion, but it cannot be the same motion that was presented for Jackie Krueger's nomination.
So we can make a motion to table it or?
You can make a motion to table it.
Okay, then I make a motion to table the applicant elect or appointment.
I second that. Okay. So we have the motion, a second to table it until the next meeting. All right. Is there discussion on that motion? Is there discussion, any further discussion? Oh, that, I guess. We'll call the question. All those in favor of tabling the motion? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? All right. We have tabled that.
Can I ask for council, just for clarification, would you guys like anything else additional sent to the candidates to make a choice or decision? Okay. All right. We'll just put it back on the agenda for a next council.
Okay. All right. Moving on then to 5.3, resolution appointing, no, no, you said that, sorry.
Skip that, 5.4.
Yes, sorry. Providing for competitive negotiated sale of the GO bonds for Second Street. Shannon.
Welcome. Thank you. Meeting, mayor members of the council, Shannon Swinney, David Brown Associates, put together pretty similar materials that you saw before, kind of talking about structure and process for what we're intending to do. We have a total project cost of roughly $9,655,000. We have county participation of just under 3.4 million. We're intending to spend cash of about a million dollars and finance the remainder of $5,260,000 in project costs in order to fund this project. If we proceed under this structure for the finance plan, we would tonight be initiating the process for a competitive sale of bonds, meaning that we would create a offering document, mostly done already. Staff is in the process of reviewing it. That document gets distributed to folks that are called underwriters and they're folks that purchase bonds and resell them to investors. They are our bidders and we would expect on a deal this size to have three or four bids at least is generally our expectation on something of this size. As a part of this process, we'll be purchasing a credit rating from Standard and Poor's. They will do a third party analysis of the city's ability to repay this debt and assign us a letter grade. Our letter grade in the past has been an A+, which is a good credit rating for a community this size. It's our desire and hope to maintain that credit rating, but this is a large project and you should understand that. But our goal ultimately is to try to maintain that A+ credit rating through this process. Based on current market conditions, we expect the interest rate to be about 4%, but we won't fix a rate until we receive bids for the purchase of these bonds, to be clear. And so that process of purchasing the credit rating takes about two and a half weeks and ultimately we're starting this process this evening. If you choose to proceed, we'd be receiving bids on March 25th and they'd be presented to you that evening for consideration for award. Again, we expect to have multiple bidders. That credit rating will buy us at least 3/4 of a percent in interest rate, which on $5 million is a lot of money over the life of this deal. So the credit rating is worth it. We highly recommend the purchase of that credit rating and ultimately we think it will help us achieve better results than without it, by far. So. You want to rehash the details again or go into?
Think we have questions about it?
So again, the action that's before you is a resolution that initiates that competitive sale process. It authorizes us to engage with Standard and Poor's to purchase a credit rating. We should have that credit rating in about two and a half to three weeks in advance of the March 25th sale date. We will distribute that credit rating along with the offering document that describes the city, our pledge for repayment, our ability to repay the debt. It goes into our existing debt history, all those good things, our market values, all kinds of good stuff. And ultimately they will make a lending decision based on the credit rating and our official statement. And it's worked well for us in the past. We have rated bonds previously as a city. And again, that A+ credit rating has helped us achieve good results and so we expect the same to happen once again. The credit rating process will involve a management call with your staff. That will last probably a good hour and they ask hard questions. But they do give us a questionnaire in advance of the call and we'll work with your staff on the responses to those questions. But they're pretty standard stuff. A lot of its information we're already presenting, but at the end of the day, they'll ask some additional things. How frequently do you interact with the council with regard to budgets, you know, things like that? So it'll be a good exercise. Happy to answer questions. I know there's a lot in the letter that I gave to you again, but it was pretty similar to what we walked through last time. And so if you'd like to walk through it again, I'm happy to do so.
We had, the city's had an A+ credit rating for?
Yeah, it's been a while now. Yeah. Since we started rating. Yeah. We had discussed briefly the issue of special assessments in the past and you still have the flexibility to decide, you know, for our purposes at this point, we've simply structured it based on the $222,727 that was originally discussed. You know, ultimately what I see is if you choose to assess a greater portion of the project costs, it will ultimately have impact on reducing the tax levy. And so, or the stormwater fee that we're intending to have to implement or increase, I should say, but most likely folks choose to use that to offset tax levy impact. And so as you get towards the end of the project, when they're going to have that assessment hearing, you're going to have to get serious about the amount that you want to assess and how that might assist in having impact on levy, so.
Does anybody have questions for Shannon? I don't have any questions. All right. Anybody like to make a motion regarding resolution 2024-007?
Make a motion. Just started. This, yeah, to get started for the sale of the bond, right?
Yes. This authorizes that.
Yeah, yeah. I'll make a motion to do it, to make the sale of the bond.
All right. We have a motion by Dawn.
I'll second it.
And a second from Jenny. All right. Any discussion? And further questions for Shannon? Any discussion, any discussion? Then I will call the vote. All those in favor of passing resolution to begin the bond process, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. Thank you.
We're getting underway. Shannon.
We'll see on the 25th of March.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay. Getting the process going. Moving on to 5.5, resolution providing full-time employment to Officer Reed Hushel. You want to give us background, Michael?
Sure, yeah. So this is an actual item that should have been done last year for Para's benefit. Para needs to move him from part-time to full-time on our Para report. In order to do that, we need a resolution passing to say that he's a full-time officer, obviously Reed has been a full-time officer for Reed. So you're going to see the dates in there look like they're retroactive. It's because they are, they're retroactive. So basically we're going to okay this, the mayor's going to sign it and we're going to send it to Para to get him activated correctly. He has been paying, we are not going to have a back pay situation. We've been paying the right amount, but when we reported to Para at the beginning of 2024, they still had him as part-time. So we just need to bump him.
Correct.
I second.
Motion by Kelly, second by Wanda. Any discussion? Any discussion, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carried. Tell Reed we're happy to have him as a full-time.
Some of us are.
All right. 5.6, fire and ambulance contract updates.
Yeah. So on council, it starts on page 54 of your packet. I just, I wanted to give you kind of a brief overview of what happened. At the meeting on February 15th, I know Mayor Troublehorn and Council Pearson were at that meeting, but I just kind of wanted to give you the feedback that we got from the meeting, number one. They're not interested in a per-value, land value contract. They are looking for a per-section contract, which is what we have placed right now with them. So based on emails and some conversation with the townships, we're going to have another meeting at the end, middle of March and we're going to set a new rate. So our current rate is 175 per section for fire and now our newer rate will be about 410 per section for fire. Ambulance, which has never been on the radar because we've always made money off ambulance, which has very much changed in recent years, that'll be at 70, or sorry, $65 per section. It is what Gaylord charges their, their townships and extra sections that they cover. And you know, for instance, Severance, Severance is a town that does not take our fire coverage, but we cover them for ambulance and all 36 of their squad or their sections. And they have paid $0 to cover the ambulance cost. And what that means is, you know, even, even if, even if ambulance does make money, we still have to raise the levy to pay for ambulance, right? There's no extra revenue and sometimes people don't pay their bills for ambulance. We all know that, that happens. That means that that gap is now going to be covered by the townships. Right now, the burden for raising the money is completely on the city of Winthrop and the townships have no, no contribution to that at all. So going forward, we're going to raise per section. We're going to add the per section for ambulance and then that will get mailed out every year. It seems like the townships were really happy about a couple of things. Number one, we gave them our full financial disclosure during the meeting, meaning they have all the information that we have. They were a little bit confused on how to read the financial documents, so we actually tweaked the report a little bit to not show transfers. So we sent that out three days after the meeting. We're trying to be as responsive as we can. We also promised them that we are going to send them quarterly reports every single year so they know where the spend is coming and what's going on. But other than that, I just wanted to give you an update on how we are handling those situations with, especially when they, you know, don't have ambulance, but they have fire or vice versa, you know? Right now it's just really unequal. We were the lowest in Sibley County when it comes to per-section cost by almost half. So it was time to do an upgrade and an update to our per-section costs and I think most of the townships were receptive to it. So we should have a contract hopefully next month. I scheduled the fire meeting right before, a week before council, so we should have that contract in place before then.
I thought the meeting went well.
I thought it did too. It was a little hard there.
Yes.
So there was nobody that was very angry and receptive. I think they're all receptive. I mean, there were some options that were given to them instead of the per-section, but that's some clarification as to when we contact them if there's an overage or a piece of equipment that needs to be purchased. Yeah, I thought it went pretty well.
And I think they all kind of understood that they've gotten a pretty good deal for the last quite a few years, so.
But once again, we have to be thankful for our service.
Yes, we do.
For the last week, we're only just down to one ambulance with not enough people to cover a second one.
Yeah, that was one of the things I thought about too.
I'm thankful.
We serve all those township sections, but the staffing for the volunteers for the fire department and the ambulance has to come from the city because you have to be close enough to that. So that's.
Call time's a big deal.
Yeah. And, and so that service comes from the people who choose to live here and that's one extra. It's not really a burden, but it is a burden on the residents of Winthrop in a good way when they want to serve.
And you know, the other side of that contract, which has never factored in, is staff time. I mean, the amount of times that Heather has to contact people, send things to collections, go to expertise billing, get those documents. I know that's just part of the service, but I mean, that's never factored in and that, it gets really expensive. I mean, we spend, we have spent a lot of time on fire and ambulance this past year trying to get them up to snuff. And then, you know, that article in the Free Press, I think I sent that to you guys. I think that was really telling, you know, we don't live in a bubble, right? This is happening everywhere. There are really great services that are no longer existing because the cost is running ambulance services out. And if we had to contract with Alina or Hutchell, it would be significantly more than what we currently pay. And so keeping them and planning for the future is really important when it comes to ambulance. And I mean significant. It would double, it would double what we have and not only that, none of our facilities would fit their need. So just some things to keep in mind.
True. Okay. Move on to 5.7, the resolution accepting the resignation of EMS personnel and pension payouts.
Pretty standard resolution. This is just authorizing the city clerk to pay out those that are owed a pension. Katie Grand has decided to resign Michael Burns and Ginny Stoll. All served really, really well on the ambulance crew. We don't want them to leave. Hopefully they'll reconsider in a couple of weeks and come back. But right now, council would approve that and that will, we'll cut the checks. You did approve last month the official, official policy with regards to ambulance pension, so. pension, so that is on the books now, so that's.
I move to accept the resignation of those three.
I'll second it.
All right, motion by Dawn, second by Kelly to accept the resignations. Any discussion? Any discussion? All's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried, and please share our heartfelt thank you to them for the years of service they did provide for our community. Moving on then to 5.8, the proposal for construction testing services.
So, on behalf of the city, I solicited a proposal from American Engineering Testing. They're the, they're the firm that did the geotechnical review of the project area. They did the soil borings that we used for design. They also did the asbestos testing in the homes that are going to be demolished generally in these cases. I didn't solicit proposals from, from any other geotechnical engineers because generally in these cases, kind of for a continuation of professional responsibility, we like to stick with the same, same firm that provided the, the testing for the, for the, for the design. So, before you, there's a proposal for, for two things, basically. They're, they're lumped into one. The first is for construction testing services. So, for, for state aid projects, the state has what's called the SALT manual for, which SALT stands for state aid for local transportation. It's, it's their, basically their testing manual that prescribes testing that needs to be done for a state aid project. It includes things like compaction testing, density testing of the trench compaction, concrete testing of the curb and gutter, sidewalk, those types of things, testing of the bituminous pavement, and also source material testing, kind of, they'll go to the plants where they, they make the materials and they'll do some spot checks, but then they also do samples of materials once they, once they're brought onto site as well. So, things like gravel, make sure they have the right, right mix of fines and bigger rock and things like that in the gravel. So, the first portion of the proposal then is a fee, an estimated fee. This would be a time and material set contract is just under $75,000. That's the $74,826. That's their, their best guess estimate, basically, at performing the testing services that are required, basically, for a state aid contract through that SALT manual. The second portion is for basically a pre-construction survey and vibration monitoring services. So, what they would do is they would come and they would check existing buildings, document existing conditions, and then during the, during the construction itself, they would put some vibration sensors out there to see if vibration's getting, you know, to a certain level that they think might be, you know, dangerous for a structure or something, and then they would, they would essentially halt construction, and then we'd have to, the contractor would have to rethink about how they're, they're performing their work in order to get that to a lower level. They, they do have in here, their proposal includes 32 properties. I think that's a little bit probably overkill. I think really the, the properties that would, I guess, benefit probably the most from it, or that would be, you know, quote unquote, more required, would be probably about 20 properties or so, so I'd be thinking the properties that are just in the area where you're talking about the 30, the 30 feet, you know, the really deep excavation, so call it, between Main Street and Hepburn Street. And then also because the buildings in that area are some older brick structures, some of them, and then they're also right on the right-of-way line, so they'll be, you know, they're somewhat closer to the construction, and then also with it being deep, and they might be running some rollers with vibrators and things like that in those trenches, so. So, their quote includes 32 properties. I think we could probably talk, talk through it with them and get it probably down to closer to 20 is what I would think, kind of for those, those more at-risk areas. And really, kind of the idea behind the pre-construction surveys and the vibration monitoring is it provides a little bit more protection for both the city and also for the property owners. So, from a city standpoint, it provides a little bit more protection from like a he-said, she-said scenario, let's say at the end of a project saying, you know, I didn't have a foundation crack here, and now I do, it must have been the project where if you have that all documented ahead of time, you can easily say, well, no, this was here before, or no, it wasn't, and things like, can help, help on the backend to resolve some disputes, or I should say potential disputes if there were any. And then additionally, for the, for the property owner, again, it, it provides a little bit of protection for them because it, if, if the vibration levels, you know, get too high, then, then we can talk to the contractor about rethinking how they're doing it so that we can bring those vibration levels lower. And then also, on the flip side also for the landowner, the city can't come in and say, well, no, that was there before, and then, you know, to their, to their benefit, if it wasn't, then we have the documentation kind of to prove that. So, that, that is not required by state aid, but again, there's, there's some additional benefit for that. And I think it would, it could, it could be brought down closer to probably about 20 properties. That was, so, from a budgetary standpoint, the, the construction testing was included in the overall construction budget. The, the additional testing for the vibration monitoring and the, and the pre-construction surveys is not, but if, if you recall, the, the estimated project budget did include 10% contingency, which is, which is fairly healthy. It's right around $700,000. So, if the city elected to do that, there's not money in the base budget, let's say, but there's money, there's money in the budget if you were to use some of that contingency to pay for some of that, so. Any questions?
I just know that there was a lot of questions during the meetings with business owners downtown. You know, when Carver went through, some of the brick work on buildings was damaged. Some of it happened beforehand. There was a lot of disputes with Carver. I think, too, you know, we have a clinic, we have a dental office, we have a post office, we have some other buildings that are older. Those are some of the, the concerns that, you know, we, we heard during these meetings, and this will hopefully try to help make those decisions a little bit better.
To me, it seems like some due diligence that we owe those property owners, especially the medical and dental clinics, because vibrations are going to be much more impactful for them. Okay, so, from the council, you need, we need to decide if we're going to go ahead with that.
Correct.
All right, council, what's your wishes? I move that we proceed with additional testing. All right, motion by Wanda to do the additional.
I'm going to second that.
Second by Jenny. All right, we have a motion and a second to move ahead with that. Is there discussion? Anybody have any further questions for Brian or?
Yeah, I do. Concerning this, so if there is excessive vibration or after they're done, there is a crack or something that forms, do we have any protection with this?
Sure, the, the protection would fall under, I believe, the contractor's insurance, and then also their, their bond amount as well, I believe. I'd have to maybe consult with the attorney as far as any other protections, but, but really, any, any and all project, as I understand it, is always basically on, on the contractor.
Okay.
Any, any more questions? Any discussion? Then I'll call the question. All's in favor of the proposal, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
And then, I'll just give a brief, maybe, kind of update. We do have a pre-construction meeting scheduled with the contractor, and, and then the tester will be there as well. I told him, kind of penciled in. And then, if they choose to bring any subs, there'll be the opportunity for the private utilities to come and talk about any relocates they might have to do, city and county staff as well. So, really, we don't, at that meeting, we should get a, get a schedule from the contractor so we'll have a better idea of kind of what their, their plan of work is, and we'll just kind of talk through some kind of the contract requirements and some different things like that, kind of get gearing up for the work. Yeah, otherwise, otherwise, they, they still do, under the contract, have to get the clearing and grubbing at least done by the end of March, and then for the, for the BAT requirement. And then after that, we'll see what happens as far as the weather, and hopefully the weather holds up, they get a pretty good jumpstart this spring. I think their, their initial, in initial conversations with them, they're kind of thinking as soon as road, road policies come off, they would like to kind of get, get moving, so hopefully, hopefully it's an early spring.
What is the timeline again for this?
Substantial completion would be September 15th, and then final completion is the end of June in 2025. So, when I, when I say substantial completion, basically, that means the first lift of pavement, and then generally what we've done historically, and I think even more so we want to in this case because of the depth of the trenches, is we, we go through a free saw cycle, they see if there's any settlement in those trench areas that they have, might have to correct, and then they come through and they do the final lift of pavement. And then there might be some landscaping items and things that they might have to take care of in the spring as well, so.
All right.
There's no other questions? Thank you.
And then, just so you guys know, too, we're, we're giving ISG our constant contact. I know that this has already gone out, there's already been people signing up for it, so it's a signup list, so people know, so when Brian sends out an update, it automatically goes to their email, and it'll text them an actual copy of that so they can just click it on their phone and start reading the updates.
Yeah, so similar to previous years, we'll be sending out weekly, weekly updates, and then, you know, maybe over winter it'll be as needed or something like that, but, yeah.
It'll be good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
I think that's really helpful to be proactive in communicating with people, so, yeah, hopefully that goes well. All right, 5.9, Travis to Sue Library Cooperative Agreement.
This agreement is with our regional library system, gives us access to all their member benefits, all the libraries that use their system, including cataloging their software system to check books in and out, Libby.
Interlibrary loans.
Interlibrary loans, all that stuff is included in this agreement. The reason that you guys are seeing this now is because the agreement with Sibley County is now done, and now each individual town will pay their same portion of the Sibley County agreement, which is at a city level since they're all city-run libraries now.
So, basically, it's money that's already been, you know, paid out already, and the county gives this money toward the library, so it's just.
I assume.
Motion by Kelly.
I'll second.
Second by Dawn. Any discussion? Discussion? All's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. 5.10, mutual aid.
This is in your packet, it's the last couple pages. I apologize, I forgot to add it. It's a, it's a mutual aid agreement between the city of Winthrop and the city of Gaylord. Our city attorney, Ken, has already looked it over, sees no problem with it, and Logan can give the gist of it, but we are at a point where it comes to policing where sometimes our guys need, and ladies, need time off, and during those times, right now, the county will only respond to emergencies. This is getting coverage on days that we don't necessarily have the coverage. They'll come over and patrol the streets a little bit, answer calls in our town at no cost either way. The caveat to all of this is that if there's any damage to our property, our cruiser, our police officer, our insurance will cover that, not theirs. So, it's a little bit different than a fire, our mutual aid agreement with fire. If we respond to a mutual aid agreement on fire, it's the town's insurance that has to pay it. And this agreement is our own insurance that will pay the damage. And the reason we did that is because we have very wide range of equipment needs in our two departments, and the League of Minnesota Cities said it would be a lot easier if it was just on their own, their own insurance, because it's not a volunteer service, they're full-time employees with comp issues and different equipment. So, this also, the other caveat is it has to be approved by the chiefs. So, if the police chief says, hey, Gaylord, sorry, next week does not work for us, we're at conference, and we have limited coverage anyway, we can't cover you, they respect that, and they'll work something else out. It's those times where we can cover, where, hey, we have someone on this weekend, they can come patrol the streets a little bit, answer calls when needed, but it is, it's a two-way street, they'll communicate when needed. It's our first step in, you know, helping another department out, which really hasn't, it's always been the unwritten rule, but now we have a, a new, new policy. Anything else, Logan?
Yeah, just in layman's terms, this is just like helping out a neighbor, right? Like, this isn't going to be like a day thing. It's when one of our towns needs some help, we're super fortunate right now that we're full staff, most places are not, so if we can help out a neighbor, we can, if, if we have options, so, yes. I just think it's a really good opportunity for everyone to get along together and help each other out when we're in need, and frankly, policing has been all out of here right now.
All right. Someone like to make a motion?
Motion to approve mutual aid with Gaylord.
Motion to approve by Jenny.
Second.
Second by Kelly. Any discussion? Any discussion? All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Great, all right, old business, park improvement update.
Yes, so the park committee met two weeks ago now on a Friday. It was a great day. We're trying to really nail down the details. So, the park committee has decided that we're not going to build a pump house and/or shed anymore, it's going to be like a metal dome that hoses all the equipment. So, the reason that we're doing that is to engineer something that would hose a recirculating pump house would cost an astronomical amount of money. It was almost $350,000. So, instead of that, we are putting a dome in, which you see actually in different areas. Public Works will build a fence around it so that they still have access to it, but it's kind of blocked. It's pretty common, honestly. I found a lot of different parks now that have the dome versus an actual building. So, where's that extra money going? Well, the extra money is going to go to the new restroom area. So, ISG has suggested that we just buy a modular building. A lot of cities are doing that now. Instead of engineering and trying to reinvent the wheel, they are suggesting that we get a building that is pre-engineered. The city of Bloomington actually just engineered a building from a company that is local, it's actually a Minnesota company. We are going to take that design, spiff it up a little bit when it comes to not adding, they had like it enclosed with rocks and stuff, and ours will just be open so that people can access it a little bit better. But includes bathrooms, a universal, and it will look a little bit like a van shelter. It has a pitched roof and everything, and that will go where the current north building is. The reason that the current north building would be used is to save on infrastructure costs. Sewer and storm are already there, and that building's bathrooms are already terrible. They, they, like, they could not be ADA accessible. They're too small. The other thing that I want to update you is the feedback from the state of Minnesota based on our park grant, so I did submit it, half-completed. It was a review process so that they can review it. ISG is working feverishly, I don't know if you guys knew this, but they were surveying last week, which is great, there was no snow. They got to survey the ground, which is great, so we should have that report back in a couple weeks, and then we'll be able to submit. The grant is for $350,000. They liked the accessibility, their big points are to, they liked that we passed a resolution, committed money to it, so that they know that it's there. And the third thing that they really liked is the accessibility portions, the walkways to it, the parking lot to it, and redoing the building. They thought it was a worthwhile project. And then the water reuse facility, so 6.2 on old business, sorry, any questions about the park update? Okay, sorry. Water reuse facility. There's so much to this project that is so time-sensitive, so I will tell you that four other towns have now added themselves to the list. It's us, New Auburn, Lafayette, and Given, so there's four of us. We do have four industries that are potential users of the facility, and those four users have all signed intent, letter of intent agreements, just like the cities. So, now our, our big go-get is to get to the state capital, ask for some money. Kimley Horn is doing that for us and obviously myself. It's a big project, but it's also a really great project. It'll help Portland Corn Products, it'll help UFC, it'll help, it'll help Michael Foods over in Gaylord. It's a, it's a great project. The DNR and MPCA and Region 9 are going to do letters of support for the project going forward. So, we have some partners now, we have support, and this is really about, instead of building 20 to 30 million dollar facilities in every single small town, we are building one large facility to intake about 5 million gallons worth of water every single day, clean that water, and then send it to industrial use, so Michael Foods, Portland Corn Products. So, you'll be hearing a lot about it, but it, again, a lot of this is now engineering phase, and that just, you know, takes people much smarter than I to engineer the thing and get it to a correct level, and then we'll, we'll have more cost estimates. The other caveat to all of this is the wastewater district. It's a very weird thing in Minnesota, there's actually no state statutes forming wastewater districts, they just kind of form. So, Mankato's a great example, just. So Mankato's a great example, just because it's right down the road from us. Mankato is a wastewater district, but Mankato's in charge of it. They're the big, big player in it. They, they, it's all their employees. It's all of their, um, equipment. It's their building. They just charge for services to North Mankato, Skyline and, and whatnot. We're proposing is that this building, the employees would be, belong to a wastewater district that would be separate from all the cities. And the reason that we're doing that, um, is to include it, the entire bond would come to all four towns and not just ours. So, um, we're working through that. The league of Minnesota cities is helping us. Um, and, you know, it's, they're all interested because we, we, we form water districts all the time. We just don't do wastewater districts all the time, uh, because it's just not normally a thing. Even Fargo, Fargo's a really great example. They have an ethanol plant. Uh, you may have heard that. Uh, that's where we're getting the water reuse facility from. The city of Fargo owns the plant. It's their plant. It's not a wastewater district. So we're taking some of that stuff and bringing it back here, but saying, how do we spread that out? How does Lafayette own a piece? And, and that really is to make sure that our rates are conducive to their town too, right? They have to run the district just like a business, you know, and so we're not, we're not, the city of Winthrop, everyone else's wastewater comes here and all of a sudden we want to raise the rates by fifty percent. And there's no statutes that say we couldn't. So, um, this kind of puts balance into that project and I think it's a really good way to go about things. So that's kind of the update on the wastewater facility. Um, there'll be more to come. We meet almost every Friday now. So every Friday is a good Friday. Getting everyone together. So.
All right. Well, that's exciting. Any questions about any of that, Michael? Then we can move on to committees and updates. Um, admin, you want to just keep talking?
Yeah, sure. I like talking. Um, the EDA is looking for facility grants. Uh, the facade grants are not, um, no one's filled one out yet. But I have a feeling it's coming because I've had a lot of questions about it. So businesses are encouraged. Obviously it's a facade grant. It has to be part of the physical structure or something that the EDA council deems necessary, like signage, painting, roofing, windows. We fund up to fifty percent of our forty thousand, our thirty thousand dollar project up to fifteen thousand dollars, dollar for dollar match. Um, it's one of the most robust facade grant programs in probably our whole region. Uh, I encourage businesses to reach out. You know, once that money starts going, it's going to go fast. Um, so that is on our website, newly designed, winthropminnesota.com slash EDA.
Which looks really good, by the way.
I've heard a lot of people think the navigation's a lot easier. So that was good. That's, we wanted to simplify it. So hopefully it's a little bit easier to, I'll tell you, uploading the agendas now is way easier. And I don't have gigabyte limits. So I can just upload the whole packet and not make a different one. So it's a lot easier.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, um, utilities.
Other than, uh, we have saved tons of money. Um, hopefully there's no snow in November to center. We, we've made up, uh, our budget from last year. So that's good. The other thing about utilities is they're really busy planning for Second Street. They're putting some, um, new valves in for the water lines so that we don't have to shut up entire blocks at the same time. They're working on that. And then, um, there's some poles that have to move, um, on, between Hennepin and Second, uh, excuse me, Hennepin and Carver, uh, by the alleyways. And so they're working on that. Uh, you'll probably see some movement on that actually as soon as, as soon as we can.
Jumped in, questions? Uh, ferry departments, anything?
They completed their DNR grant and we are going to submit invoices. So we'll be getting payment back. Uh, they, they got some pagers and a few radios. Uh, we finally, we haven't got the product yet, but we paid for it and we want to get the DNR grant paid for and up to stuff. They'll be coming. Uh, and then they also filled out a couple more grants locally to get some of their rip hacks and stuff paid for for fire.
Good. Awesome. Ambulance, we know they had some retirements. Anything else going on?
Um, they have one more going through EMT class. The new ambulance will probably have to be replaced sooner than we thought, um, because of the exponential amount of calls that been on. The act, the new ambulance actually has more mileage now than the old ambulance. So that is something just to put in the back of your wagon, your wagon there because, you know, normally five years is what they try to get.
And they've had it for.
Two. They got it right before I arrived.
Yep.
So they are rotating ambulances. Uh, they've had ten different calls where there's been double page though. So the old ambulance is, you know, just as useless than the new one.
Okay. That's what people stay healthy. The library board, not the last week guy, mostly was approving the TDS contract, I think.
Yeah, the TDS contract and they went through summer programming.
Oh, yeah.
They're doing some changes.
It's nice to see. There's a lot of, there's a lot of stuff going on and I think they're advertising it well. So that's good.
Yeah, we, um, you know, we redesigned the, the bill so that the inserts have the library calendar on the bottom and what's happening around. So hopefully people are seeing that and have a little bit of value.
Police, Logan, you got anything more for us? He usually does. I know.
Pretty much same thing as every other month as far as the numbers. Any questions about that? On the traffic stops and whatnot. Um, yeah, it's just kind of a same old, we'll probably be, uh, have a little bit less DWI enforcement, uh, this next month, next two months, because Brian will be at K nine school and that's kind of his niche. So, yeah, that being said, we did, we did pick up Kane on Monday of last week. And he is currently with Brian and Brian's learning how to take care of a puppy. That's fun. Um.
I'll never want kids.
Yeah, right. Right. Um, yeah, arrest went up a little bit, uh, last month. Uh, we wrapped up a pretty big investigation, um, on one end of it at least. And, yeah, uh, Reed went to the online investigations for overdose deaths. He got a lot out of that. And then, yeah, in January, we got, uh, Aaron back as well, full time, which is great. Uh, I did get an additional donation to the K nine program as well for another five thousand dollars. So we're at a total of just under seventy thousand that was raised for the program. So, uh, we should be getting the squad car back hopefully this week, early beginning of next week. And, uh.
Maybe.
Maybe. We need it back by the eleventh. That's when they go to training. So.
Um, how's the garage come along?
Good. Uh, the electricians came back today and started wrapping up that, kind of that final stuff. So we'll have power to all the garage doors and everything instead of hooking up extension cords at the moment. But, uh, yeah, it's going really well. Starting to utilize it at least. A little bit of manual labor involved with it, but it's fine.
The body cams, I was reading over the agreement there. How, how are they activated?
So there's multiple ways. You can manually activate it by pushing the button.
Right.
Uh, it activates if you turn on the lights in the squad car.
It does.
Yeah. Um, so those, yeah, those are the two ways. You, there is a setting on there that you can, um, activate it by gunfire as well. We haven't done that, uh, just because we're at trainings and whatnot and it's fairly sensitive. So people don't really want them randomly turning on if a book falls on the ground or something. So.
Yeah. Fast acceleration. It starts recording and records sixty seconds behind if you need it. Thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds beforehand. Yeah. There's a whole bunch of settings on that you can change it to. We haven't activated all of them because it just gets to be too much. Yeah.
So what happens to all that information at the end of the day?
So we have a retention schedule, um, and that was one of the updates, uh, for the body cam policy. And so I reached out to an auditor for body cams because it has to be done every three years. Um, I wanted to get ahead of it. So we had everything good to go. He gave some suggestions. He said that one of the main things was that retention schedule. So, um, it's most video footage is ninety days. If it's, um, DWI arrests, you know, any of that stuff, that's for three hundred and sixty-five days that it needs to be held. Officer involved shootings, anything like that needs to be held indefinitely. And so that just a couple of those things need to be updated in the, in the policy.
Good.
Any other questions? Perfect.
Very much.
Thanks, Logan.
Yep.
Public Works, anything cooking there?
Um, there's a conference next week. It's the real water, uh, conference. Myself and Troy will be at it. Um, there's obviously some partners when it comes to real water that we want to speak to, um, including MPCA and DNR. So we want to show our faces. Um, and then, uh, they're going to start street sweeping probably tomorrow, unless it doesn't snow.
All right. Can sweep up a little snow water?
Yeah, definitely.
Um, cattle commission.
Uh, we had a meeting on Thursday, last Thursday. The only thing we're working on is having that class to take your, put your pictures on a video or like a thumb drive. So you have it all the time. Take the reel to reels and put them on a CD. And Wade wants to do that class. So he wanted to do it this year, but I think he might be looking at fall.
Okay. Planning commission.
Uh, they have not had a request, but, uh, you know, it's almost that time of the year where construction will begin. So I'm sure they'll get busy.
Okay. Park, we heard those. Um, ours is fiber. We have not met. Okay, since the last meeting, no. Um, anything else? All right. Would like to move to adjourn?